For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please remain standing for amplification. Ms. Grath, how are you?
I'm fine.
Good, welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Leanne Grath from Church of the Ascension.
Holy Father, we gather here this evening as one body, praying that you be with us in wisdom, compassion, tolerance, and discernment while we discuss the issues that affect our community. As we make our decisions, may we be good stewards by not losing track of the needs of our people and the common good of all. We are humbly grateful for all that you have given us, both as a community and as individuals. May we never forget your constant mercy and care as we say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Grath. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember LaGaye.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Great, thank you. First item scheduled public appearance is recognition of some longtime Public Safety Advisory Commission members and the chairman. I don't see Larry or Kathy here tonight, right? But I wanted to say a few words, and we've got a nice certificate for them, just to recognize them, but certainly their years of service go beyond them receiving just a certificate. But they know we're very appreciative. First, Larry Moyes, who's been our chairman for quite some time. He served as the Public Safety Advisory Commission since December of 2004 through March of 2011. Larry was instrumental in implementation of the annual public safety fairs, which are just going very, very well. Research and recommendations of the town council regarding scooters and motorized vehicle ordinances, and assisting the block watch program. Larry regularly attended the commission meetings, and his participation will be missed, and we want to thank Larry for the involvement and service and the numerous number of hours he's put into the Public Safety Advisory Commission. I'm sure we'll still see him around town helping out. Our other person to recognize, and I don't see Kathy here. Kathy's also, Kathy Krogstad's also been a part of the PSAC, as we often call it, the Public Safety Advisory Commission, since December of 2004, just through this March of 2011. And she's contributed to establishing the town's block watch program in particular, and she's been an advocate for crime prevention and a voice for public safety concerns. And we want to thank Kathy for her involvement and service on the Public Safety Advisory Commission, and we'll make sure they get these certificates next time we see them. But please, if you know Kathy and Larry, thank them for their service and their time, many, many years on the commission. Now I'll move on to a presentation by John Milne and Tim Zaring related to crime-free multi-housing. Welcome, you guys. Thanks for coming out.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council staff. My name is Tim Zaring. I'm going to be making the presentation for John Milne and myself, on behalf of the Sterling Crime Free Program. And I don't know why I just did that. Please pardon me. I had it all queued up where it wasn't going to misbehave.
And thanks for participating in the last public safety day.
Our pleasure. Certainly was. I would like to give you a real brief history of the crime-free programs. It was founded in 1992 when I was a police officer at the Mesa Police Department. I retired after 22 years of service. I retired three years ago. I was spending 70% of my patrol time in multifamily housing communities, a lot of density in those small communities, because people live on top of each other and underneath each other and very close proximity to each other. We'd get a lot of police calls. In your single-family residences, people typically have a large investment when they purchase a home. The way it's supposed to work is you build equity the longer you live there. And so Neighborhood Watch is a pretty good program for single-family homes. In apartment communities and other communities where there's rentals, people typically don't have a large investment moving in, and they don't build equity. So when crime becomes a problem, they just move out. So we had to develop a very special program at the Mesa Police Department to deal with crime in multifamily properties, and it was the Crime-Free Multi-Housing Program. We've had great success with the program in over 2,000 cities in the United States, and the statistics have been pretty consistent internationally. We're seeing about a 70% reduction in crime and police calls for service. In 1993, the Arizona Multi-Housing Association, which is the apartment association for Arizona, was very endeared to the crime-free program. They loved it. They thought it was a great program, so they lobbied to the Arizona Legislature, and they asked the legislature to take one component of our program, a crime-free addendum, and make it statutory. The legislature adopted the Crime-Free Lease Addendum, which is a one-strike-you're-out document, which says if a resident or any member of the resident's household, or a guest, or any person affiliated with that resident is involved in crime, drugs, violence, any one of a number of things, one-strike, they're evicted. And it became ARS Statute 33-1368. I worked with HUD here in Phoenix, and HUD all the way to Washington, DC, and President Bill Clinton presented in his State of the Union address in January of 1996 a challenge to the Congress and to the American people. He said, "Local housing authorities and tenant associations, I've got a challenge for you. Criminal gang members and drug dealers are destroying lives of decent tenants. From now on, the rule for people who commit crime and peddle drugs should be one-strike, you're out." And he signed that with his own hand in July of that year. Didn't mean we weren't going to have challenges. In fact, our first test case was in the year 2000. It was out of the Oakland Housing Authority, Davis v. Rucker. The defendant in this case felt it was unfair that she could be evicted for the criminal behavior of her children, when she said she had no knowledge of the fact that they were committing crimes. The Ninth U.S. Circuit Court disagreed. They said, "There's no such thing as a stupid tenant. You are responsible for your family members and your guests." It was challenged to the United States Supreme Court, and on March 22nd of 2000, or March 26th of 2002, the United States Supreme Court ruled unanimously in favor of the crime-free programs. Chief Justice Rehnquist himself gave the opinion. The crime-free programs have spread internationally to 12 countries. I've trained about 15,000 police officers, and while the program's been extremely successful, there have been some barriers. One of the barriers, in times of budget cuts, some police agencies have had to concentrate more on police officers on the street rather than police officers in proactive crime prevention programs. And so that's been one thing that's hurt them for keeping the program going, although by and large, we're doing extremely well. Probably 90-plus percent of the agencies are still doing the program. The barrier for property managers is to qualify for this certification program, they have to improve their lighting, they have to improve their landscaping, and they have to improve their locks. Now, I'm not saying they have to light the place up like a prison yard, because certainly that's not something we want to see. But the lighting has to be intelligent lighting to detect crime and to make the place safe. And for some of them, they said, "It's too expensive for us to make those changes. We don't want to spend our money on those improvements." As the president of the International Crime-Free Association, I got recommendations to approach insurance companies, because insurance companies have more money than they really know how to deal with, in my opinion, and they ought to reward people for making improvements to their properties. I started approaching, through John Milne, insurance companies like Travelers and Fireman's Fund, and Liberty Mutual, and Colorado Casualty, and Philadelphia, and CIBA, just on and on, including Lloyds of London, and explained to them the plight of people who own rental properties. And they want to improve their properties, but in these tight budget years, they've got to find a way to get money back for their improvements. The insurance companies were extremely pleased that in 20 years, we've never had a property successfully sued for a negligence case, and they were also impressed that the frequency and severity of crimes dropped dramatically. So the insurance company said, "We want to be on board with this, and we are happy to provide support." John Milne, as an insurance broker in Phoenix, his name is synonymous with insurance in the state of Arizona. His father and his father before him have been doing insurance. He said, "I can help you get to the people you need to talk to and get this going." One of the things that John also was able to do was establish public-private partnerships in the state of Arizona. From Avondale to Apache Junction, from Flagstaff down to Nogales, we go and we provide free training, unlike other public-private partnerships. We provide free training for people. They can come in, take the classes. There's no obligation to buy anything, but we bring in subject matters, subject matter experts from lighting companies, landscaping companies, attorneys that talk about landlord-tenant laws, address fair housing issues, and we educate property managers on everything from soup to nuts, how to make their property safer for the people that live there. And all of our speakers are told, they don't come in to give a commercial, they're just there to educate. And it's been extremely successful. One of the things that we are very proud of is the three Cs. We have competency in our team. All of our members are either retired police officers or retired firefighters. The character issue is that they're all honorably retired from the agencies in which they worked. And collaboration, we work with every city in the way and fashion that they want the program to work. They tell us what they want, how often they want it, and how they want it done. The Sterling Crime Free mantra is improving our community through individual responsibility, and we are hoping to be able to offer free training to the residents and business members here in Fountain Hills. That is my presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Zaring. Any questions from council at all on this item? I know it's been rocking and rolling here. The MCSO's been a supportive, and Officer Funk, before he was moved to a different area, spent a lot of time on crime-free multi-housing, so it's been a good program.
I trained Jerry.
Here, I'm sure you did.
Yes.
And this program, is this something that the property owners opt into?
Yes.
Okay.
It's voluntary, and the fact is, most of your people, once they hear about it, might resist it at first, just because they're afraid that they have to do certain things. But once they find out it's a voluntary program, I think you'll be very pleased at how many people get involved. When I retired from Mesa PD in 2008, I had 1,600 property managers that joined the crime-free program. They represented 115,000 rental units, so it was a very popular program in Mesa. And we're seeing that all across the country. There's just a, it's an evolution, not a revolution, but they do join eventually.
Good, thank you. Good presentation. Any questions, comments? Councilmember Dickey.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask you if you were familiar with the Keeping America Safe best practices. It was, came from the Broken Windows of philosophy, I guess you could say, from George Calleng, and a few of the things. They recently did a presentation in the city of Scottsdale, and there were a lot of law enforcement people there, and said what I think is what you were saying, which is half of the calls come from 10% of the locations, which was kind of surprising. And so I wanted to ask if you were familiar with that, and if you had an opinion about that, and if you'd heard about the reentry and other initiatives that are going in Arizona right now that are based on community policing, and if you have a favorable opinion of those.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, I have heard of them. I do conferences all over the country. The Broken Window Theory is one that is not even really a theory in my mind. It's been proven time and time again. The urban, or I'm sorry, the blight that we see in neighborhoods, it starts with simple things, is broken windows and cars that need to be towed. I wholeheartedly endorse their philosophies, and I'm not familiar with any of them here locally, although I have attained, attended regional and national trainings with them. But I'm not familiar with anybody here in Arizona.
Thank you. Hopefully, I can call you sometime soon.
I would love to meet with them.
Thank you.
Good, thanks, Mrs. Zaring, very much. It was good. And Mr. Milne, thanks for being here.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
I'll make a note here for folks watching and here in the audience. Item number five on our regular agenda has been pulled at the request of staff, so that's item number five. If you were here for that, we will not be going over item number five tonight. All right, now we'll move on to call to the public. Any speaker cards tonight?
Yes, Mayor. Wendy Bosie.
Hey, Ms. Bosie, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Great, thank you.
I handed out some things beforehand that I hope you had a chance to look at. This little different bend from what you just were listening to, but the impression, the impressive visual impact of thousands of balloons being released into the sky may last a few minutes, but the impact on wildlife and the marine conservation environment may last many months with potentially harmful consequences. I'm not against balloons. I'm against releasing balloons into the atmosphere, where they eventually return to earth and can pose a danger to our wildlife in the water and on land. My name's Wendy Bosie, and I've lived with my husband and family in Fountain Hills for 12 years now. I've worked at McDowell Mountain School for going on 12 years, and I have volunteered at Liberty Wildlife for 11 years, which is a wildlife conservation facility down in Scottsdale. And every year, we visit schools in Fountain Hills. We do the Four Peaks Science Night, where Liberty Wildlife is invited to speak to the children there, and we've been in different classrooms in Fountain Hills. And I have told hundreds and hundreds of children about the dangers of releasing balloons, Mylar balloons and latex balloons into the environment, and we tell kids about alternatives to doing that, and how it hurts our wildlife when we release balloons up into the air. And I felt last year that we don't live by that example. When I was at our high school graduation last year, at the end of the ceremony in the dark, hundreds of balloons were released into the sky at the end of the graduation ceremony. They were only visible for a few seconds, and their damage can last for years. And I thought to myself, "What are we teaching here?" Because we tell the kids about the dangers of this, but we don't show them an example. So there are alternative ways to celebrate that help our environment and have lasting impressions and wonderful memories, other than the release of balloons. So it is illegal to litter under the Environmental Protection Act, but many people are unaware that balloon releases result in litter and harm to wildlife, because the majority of it comes back to earth. The balloon industry claims that latex balloons are biodegradable and degrade as fast as an oak leaf. And a study in a scientific journal found that 54% of oak leaves decomposed in a two-year period, and it took four years to completely degrade under natural conditions. So balloons could take up to four years to fully degrade, much too long a time for them to be found and eaten by an unsuspecting animal or get tangled. Mylar balloons, which are made of foil, it is unknown how many years it takes for them to break down, and they might never break down in our environment. Latex balloons are considered to be non-toxic, but they accumulate, along with other plastic debris, in an animal's stomach and intestines, and often block the passage of food and cause the animals to starve to death.
Ms. Bosie, your time is up, but we did get your material, and I'm sure you're going to make the high school aware of this.
Yes, I am.
And other folks as well. So thank you for your time, and you can certainly contact us individually offline.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Any others?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. All right, on to the consent item, to get consent agenda, we have one item. Consideration of approving the town council meeting minutes from March 8th and 17th, 2011. Look for a motion. So moved. And a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Aye.
Councilmember LaGaye.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cantino.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Elke.
Aye.
Mayor 70.
Thank you. On to the regular gen item, number two. Consideration of appointing one citizen to serve in the Community Center Advisory Commission for a two-year term beginning April 7th, 2011, ending December 31st, 2012. I move to appoint Donna Yordi to serve on the Community Center Advisory Commission for the remainder of a two-year term beginning April 7th, 2011, and ending December 31st, 2012. Could I get a second?
A second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Mayor 70.
Item number three. Consideration of appointing one citizen to serve in the Parks and Recreation Commission for the remainder of the vacated term, beginning April 7th, 2011, and ending December 31st, 2011, due to resignation. I move to appoint Ronald Rupert to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission for the remainder of a vacated term, beginning April 7th, 2011, and ending December 31st, 2011. May I get a second?
Second.
All right. I'm sorry, I didn't ask for a discussion on the last one, but any discussion on this one? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Aye. Mayor 70.
And I always, when we appoint new commissioners, and these, this ones, we just had one opening on each of these commissions. I want to recognize and thank those applicants, because typically, these days, we're getting more applicants than there are openings, which is a good problem to have. But I encourage those folks that did not get appointed this evening, or in the future, to please look for other opportunities to serve the community, and we appreciate your interest. Item number four. Discussion with possible action to approve the Centennial Circle concept plan and to authorize a budget transfer in the amount of $9,000 from the Town Manager's Contingency Fund to the facility's community center budget to support the construction of concrete memorials. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor Schlumpf, and members of the council. You may recall that back in January, Mr. Miles was here and was approaching the council about the potential for renaming the courtyard area between the library and the community center as a Centennial Circle. There was a resolution that was passed on the evening of January 20th endorsing that effort and asking Jerry to work with various groups within town and come back with a concept plan. He also mentioned at that meeting that he was going to be seeking town funds to support the construction of memorials, which were a part of the design. He's back this evening, wants to make a short presentation to the council in regards to the design of the project, as well as some information as far as the costs. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Miles.
Thanks, Mark. Welcome, for Mayor Miles, how are you?
Very good, thank you. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, it's good to be back here, and if I can remember how to run this particular one. Oh, yeah, let me, yeah, go ahead and set up the...
That looks a lot like the other presentation.
Anyway, we have, since we last talked to you, we have been working with representatives from the Town Centennial Commission, representative from the Library Association, the Historical Society, Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association, and a variety of other private individuals, and from the council. Dennis Brown has been extraordinarily helpful in working on this concept plan. What we're envisioning is a series of improvements designed to make the circle, first of all, reminiscent of what has made Arizona great, second, to become a tourist attraction for our community, and, most importantly, to provide an area where our residents and visitors can use the area, can gather, and can meet. And what we're looking at is putting up initially a series of eight monuments. Quite candidly, what I did was go over to the Veterans Memorial and say, "Hey, that looks pretty good," and took a picture of it, and went back to Photoshop and erased off the military there, and said, "That's going to be the base." We have the, you may or may not have seen this picture before. I took this picture from the air last fall, and that is our circle with, it was right in after the power of thought went in. And what we envision is putting around the area a series of monuments. Dennis Brown called us to attention that there are eight light poles there, and that obviates the concern of...
That'll be a little bigger for...
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. That obviates the concern of having to have lighting on there. So what we're doing is looking at a series of eight monuments. Now, five of these monuments would be based on the five Cs, Arizona's five Cs: cattle, copper, citrus, copper, cattle, citrus, climate, and cotton. And we have been working on that, along with the company called PMI Photometals, and they have been very helpful. What we envision in each one of them is a photograph which would be representative of that particular area. The picture of cattle you see here, that picture was taken right where we sit, in 1954, part of the P-Bar Ranch. And where I said text in the area will describe the importance of cattle, I approached Bob Mason not too long ago. Mr. Mason, as you may know, is a historian from Fountain Hills, and I said, "Bob, would you write, in 100 words or less, a brief text on each of the five Cs?" And he came back and said, "Jerry, it'd be a lot easier to write a 1,500-word dissertation on all of them." But he came through and has given us five marvelous vignettes on the importance of the five Cs. Cotton, this picture was taken down near Safford. We were able to find it. Copper, we went down to the Bisbee Mining Museum, and they were extraordinarily helpful. And this is a combination of two of their old photographs from their museum. In the upper right-hand corner, you see a shot taken from the actual inside of the mine and the outside taken with the mining area. Climate, what we did was take a picture from spring training, right here in Arizona, in Scottsdale, in the upper left-hand corner to represent spring. During the summer, a picture of boating out on Sora Lake. In the fall, a picture that I took with a couple of friends hiking in the mountains of Arizona. And in the winter, the one that we're very proud of, being able to play golf right here in Arizona, right here in Fountain Hills in the mid-winter. And that makes up our climate. The citrus, Jackie was getting tired of big fields and stuff, so that's our kitchen table. Anyway, all of these have gone through the final planning stage. The museum is preparing the Arizona History Timeline, and Debbie Skin has done a marvelous job of combining a history that hits the high points of Arizona, as well as some significant dates in Fountain Hills. She gave me the final text of that about four hours ago, and that will also go on there. In each case, the text that you see will not be right on the cement, but will be on the same type of plaques that we have on all of our properties around here. And then the Centennial Circle is being sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. The Library Association is sponsoring all of the five Cs. The Historical Society is sponsoring the Arizona Timeline. The Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring the Centennial Circle. We wanted to have the Centennial Circle there, because that's the state's seal, and we thought it would be appropriate, and we'll expand on that to explain that this is being put together by all of the various organizations. And the last one that we're working on is what we hope will be a memorial to joint cooperation for the last many, many years between Fort McDowell and the community. And we met with a representative of the reservation a few days ago. He liked the idea, said he would take it to the tribal council when they meet on April 12th. Informally, we met with President Clinton Patia, and also talked to him about it, and he said he thought it'd be a good idea. So we've been trying to find some way during the Centennial to reflect the fact that we have two communities that have managed to work together. When the casino first opened over there during my term as mayor, I got occasionally phone calls from reporters saying, "How bad has the crime problem been with the casino right next door?" And my response has been, "Not at all. In fact, we love them, because they come in and they shop at our stores, their kids go to our schools, they're marvelous neighbors, and I don't think we've had any significant crime coming out of the reservation." So it has been a marvelous combination. Anyway, that's what we're working on as the first stage, and that's why we're here tonight to ask for $9,000 for the bare basis that you saw. All of the artwork and lettering and everything else that you go on there will be put up by private money. We envision that throughout the development of this, it's going to be a public-private partnership, and I hope that we'll be able to provide more private money than we do public money. But we have commitments for $15,000 of private money so far, and if the reservation comes through, we've asked them for $200, that'll put up to $17,500. And we're asking the council to give us an allocation of $9,000 so we can get started. The next step after that will be one of two or three things. Councilmember Brown has given us a very, very good sketch of what might be the actual ground cover out there, so that we can get access throughout there. Right now, it is accessible by foot, but it is not accessible by wheelchair, and if you happen to be working on a cane, it's not very accessible, too. So one of the early things we want to do, and we hope that we can bring it back to the budget for next year, is do that. We need park benches in there, we need greenery in there, we need other equipment, and we'll be bringing those to you in stages over the next few weeks, a few months, with the idea that by the time the Centennial comes around, we may not have it all put together, but we'll have a pretty good idea where it's going. The cost probably will have to extend over to two or three budgets, because I'm aware of your financial situation. But that piece of property out in front of the community center has been lying foul ever since those buildings were put up, and frankly, it's about time we made use of them, and we think this is a good place to get started. So that's our pitch tonight, and as respectfully as I possibly can, I'm asking that you allocate the $9,000... the $9,000 so we can go ahead and start that. The moment that gets started, then I will put in the order for all of the other artwork that you saw there. And with any luck, we'll have those memorials up by the end of May, certainly by sooner. And then Councilman Alkey said, Jerry, we're not going to give it all to you at once, and I said, Tate, I'll take anything you can give me anytime, but just know I'll always be back for more. Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor Miles.
Yeah.
Councilmember Contino?
Yes, Mr. Miles, you'd said that Councilman Brown was going to be working or doing, has done a lot of work on those. Who is going to be building these?
I think, it's my understanding that Councilman Brown is going to be acting as general contractor on that, but that's really a matter between the town, Councilman Brown, and whoever else is involved.
Councilmember Brown?
If I may add to that, Councilman Contino, all I'm going to be doing is putting the proposals together and giving them to Mark. I'm just helping the town get the proposal so we can get it built for the least amount of money and as quickly as possible.
$9,000 frankly seems like a small amount to pay for that, but I'll take a bargain whatever I see it.
Good. Any other questions, comments on this? Anyone from the public on this item?
No, sir.
Mayor Miles, just want to thank you again for working with the committee and heading this and moving it forward so that we can have something to celebrate with the five Cs and the elements that you added now with the, with Fort McDowell and the timeline. I think those are terrific.
I cannot tell you how helpful Mark Mayer has been in making this happen. We ask for something, and he's always there to help us. He is a marvelous asset to this community.
Our Mark Mayer?
Our Mark Mayer. The one and the only, the one sitting over there with the yellow tie.
Thank you very much, Mark. Thank you, Mayor Miles. All right, folks, any other comments? Comments, Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please, to approve the Centennial Circle Concept Plan and authorize transfer of $9,000 from the Manager's Contingency Fund to the Facilities Community Center Budget for 2010-2011 fiscal year to construct some monuments.
All right, a motion, do we have a second? Second. All right, thank you. Any discussion or questions? Councilmember Hanson?
Do we need to make it clear that even though if we're approving the concept plan, that's not a commitment of dollars at this time?
I think that should be pretty well understood. I think it's going to make or carry over multiple budgets should the town continue to fund it.
Well, and the plan may kind of morph along the way, and, you know, it's kind of a flexible thing at this point.
Any one to...
Not a paver in stone.
Right. Yeah, and frankly, I don't think, this is somewhat of a concept plan, there's not a lot of detail on what we're seeing quite yet. So the idea of concept with the circle being our Centennial Circle encompassing these monuments and other variety of things is what we know about right now. I think we're clearly in favor of that moving forward, but as far as funding it, that'll be determined as we go. Councilmember Dickey?
Mayor, thank you. Jerry, I'm sorry, I do have a question for you. The text of the, for the plaques, will we see those before they're actually made? We'd probably feel comfortable if we could see the language.
They will be emailed to you this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, you already got them, great. Councilmember Hanson, anything you think we should amend the motion perhaps, or are we okay with just with the discussion?
No, I just want to clarify that.
Good. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
All right, thank you. Again, item five is removed from the agenda. Item six, consideration of authorizing the town manager to enter into professional services agreement between Cactus Asphalt and the Town of Fountain Hills to piggyback on the A.DOT contract for crack sealing in the amount not to exceed $115,000. Welcome, Ken, how are you?
Good evening. Contracts before you tonight are for crack sealing, surface sealing, slurry sealing, pavement stripings, and markings in Zone Five of the Fountain Hills pavement management area. The staff has reviewed numerous municipal, county, state contracts, obtained the best unit prices available, so. By piggybacking off these contracts, the town can take advantage of services previously bid for much larger volumes of work. These contracts are also bid prior to the recent spike in oil prices, and the prices have been locked in, so. We feel that we could not have received better pricing if we were to bid them out under current market conditions, and we recommend approval. We also have $515,000 budgeted in the capital projects funds, and these four contracts will come under $400,000 at $396,000. So if you have any questions?
Is that your presentation for all items?
I just combined them all there. We can go one by one if you'd like.
We may have questions on each one.
Okay.
If we go throughout to make a motion on each one.
Sure.
On this first item, item number six on our agenda.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is that what you want, motions now?
That's what I'll look for, for item number six.
Okay, may I move to approve professional services agreement, C-2011-125, between Cactus Asphalt and the Town of Fountain Hills in the amount not to exceed $115,000.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second. All right, any speaker cards on this item?
No, sir.
I'll ask now, are there speaker cards on any of the piggyback crack sealing items? Good, thanks. Any questions, comments? Councilmember Alkey?
Ken, I think I heard you say that the monies that are going to be spent on this are already budgeted from the capital improvement project, is that what you said?
That's correct.
Councilmember Legay?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at our capital improvement projects this afternoon, under this particular project, although you have four agenda items, this is all under one budget item in the capital improvement plan. I guess it's S-6008, which is repeated for each of these. And I just think it's important for folks to know that the total amount budgeted, that we budgeted, it is budgeted, is $515,000. And when I add up all of these contracts, it comes up to, I think what was stated, $396,000. So I just think it's really important, as we look through each of these, that it's budgeted as one item for $515,000, and we're coming at it at $396,000. So kudos to staff in putting this together. Thank you.
Great. And just to clarify, we have each item separately, but it's just because they're each for different parts of item five or Area Five.
Yes.
One will be crack sealing, one will be tire rubber modified surface seal, slurry sealing, and then pavement striping. Yep, all right. Any other questions, comments on item number six here? We've got a motion, Councilmember Alkey?
Just one question, Ken, it's for all the contracts, maybe it's more directed to Mr. McGuire, I'm assuming the legal's reviewed all these and recommend accepting them?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alkey, we have prepared all the piggyback agreements that go with these agreements. We've reviewed the underlying contracts to ensure that they're in place and valid, and I think that's extended. Okay, thank you.
There are more details of the maps and the different type of applications in the packet as well, and then the, I obviously asked about, you know, before the meeting, asked staff about why piggyback, why not go to bid. I think you gave a good explanation here tonight, and we're piggybacking agreements that are already out there with those funds. But is the contract itself very similar to what they have, or is it a similar agreement to what they have already executed with other cities and towns?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the idea of the piggyback agreement is to use the exact contract.
Okay.
That was entered into, and the purpose for that is obvious, that the bids were prepared and submitted in those other communities under those contract terms, and so the contractors are willing to uphold those same terms with respect to the town at that price.
And also can save us having to craft new contracts, although you have to review them.
That's correct.
Okay, so there are benefits to piggybacking, not just the cost savings, the actual application, but we don't have to recreate things that go to a...
And volume. All these contracts have much larger volume than we have.
Okay.
And so they take their price and apply it to our much smaller volumes.
It didn't sound like there was a great likelihood of any local contractor doing this work either.
There aren't any.
Okay, good. As the other sensitivity always want to have an opportunity for our local contractors to bid on town's work. All right, any other questions on item number six? All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
All right, item number seven, same presentation we just saw, consideration of authorizing the town manager entering into a professional services agreement with Cactus Asphalt and Town of Fountain Hills to piggyback on the Pinal County contract for application of tire rubber modified surface seal in the amount not to exceed $110,000. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I'll move what you just said.
All right, in a second. Any, we don't have discussion cards on this. Any questions on this item? Item number seven. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
Thank you. Item eight, consideration of authorizing the town manager to enter into a professional services agreement between Southwest Slurry and the Town of Fountain Hills to piggyback Scottsdale contract for slurry sealing in the amount not to exceed $155,000. Could I get a motion on that?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion on item number eight? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Item number nine, consideration of authorizing the town manager to enter into professional services agreement between Pavement Marking, Inc. and the Town of Fountain Hills to piggyback the Pima County contract for pavement striping and markings in an amount not to exceed $16,000. So, all right, in a second? Second. Any discussion on the striping? Councilmember Hanson?
Ken, just to kind of summarize on these, it's our staff that does have the oversight, right, that goes out and makes sure that everything's being done in a workmanlike manner?
That's correct. We monitor their progress, we coordinate when they can come out, and since we have four different contracts, we have to make sure they get done in proper timing.
Okay. I think we've seen in the past, you know, like with some of the crack sealing, you know, it looked like some of it was really, really good, and then some of it was like, could they follow the crack? So I think we want to just make sure they follow the cracks.
It was almost artistic at times.
Yeah.
Councilmember Alkey?
Thank you. Ken, I see we're piggybacking on the A.DOT contract, Pinal County contract, Scottsdale contract, and then Pima County contract. I'm just curious, what was the process that staff went through to be able to select those different, or piggyback on these different contracts?
Well, for slurry sealing, for instance, there's only one in the valley that does slurry sealing, so that is Southwest, and we are able to use Scottsdale's on that simply because we're similar. We pick out the other contracts that they'll allow us to use and give us that pricing, and these, you know, would do that. TRMSS, that was the only contract in the state for TRMSS, so our choices were limited on that. And it's mostly on pricing and what the vendors will allow. Because of our topography, it's a bit of a challenge compared to potato dirt land, so we have to, some pricing they won't allow us to use simply because of our topography, traffic control, and what goes with working in the town. So we go through all the contracts that are available and have the specifications that we need and choose from them. And some didn't, did not want to, you know, allow us to use their pricing.
So these contracts, excuse me, so these contracts are available for you to review? I assume there's some kind of communication between you, the state, the other counties, towns, that sort of thing?
Yes. We are, and we can get it into them and read them and see what, you know, most of the vendors will point us to what we are, you know, what we need and who has a contract.
I see. Okay. Thank you very much for coming under budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, terrific. And you got them from a variety of different sources, from down south and Pima County and other counties, and then from A.DOT and others, so it's good. Thanks for searching high and low for the best price, and in some cases, there's not a whole lot of selection as far as who's offering it, but I think you're right on the timing with the cost of oil going up and some of these items being related cost-wise to that. Very good. So we have a motion and a second on item number nine. We didn't do a vote on that one, correct, Ken? And no speaker cards. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Mayor seven zero.
Good, thank you very much, Ken.
Thank you.
All right, next item, council discussion direction to the town manager. None, although you may want to, we did receive this town manager from About the Balloons. And then item, yes, Councilmember Dickey?
Thank you. About that, I wanted to ask the town manager if what Wendy Bosse was speaking about, if you could maybe take a look at our applications or the things that do come to us as far as events and see if, if there's any way we can take a look at that with the balloon release. I know that the high school is what we spoke about, but, and I don't really think I can think of any that would, that happened, but maybe we can be aware of that.
I would think very more than likely on that. She'll speak to the high school, and, you know, it's likely something will be taken care of in that respect, but appreciate it. Number eleven, summary of council request, report of recent activity from our town manager. Rick?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I had the opportunity to attend with our Boys and Girls Club Director, Rich Schultz, a presentation on helping Arizona's kids succeed. This is held in Tempe, and the presentation is about three hours long, and it focused on the importance of after-school programs in curbing at-risk behaviors, and also shared, they shared statistical information with regard to the impact that positive adult relationships in kids' lives have in helping kids avoid certain at-risk behaviors. And so I found that very fascinating, as we also talked about and scrutinized a little bit, programs that seem to be interesting and fun, but they don't have any real impact, societal impact, as far as helping kids avoid those at-risk behaviors. So want to tell you that, that was a very positive experience. Also, as late as today, had a chance to meet with officials from Fort McDowell, as well as the Town of Queen Creek and the City of Mesa, to talk about East Valley traffic circulation. This is a, I guess, a sequel or a spin-off of the Collaboration Summit, where we talked about the need to address long-term traffic circulation in the east part of the valley. We will be following with discussions with MAG next Wednesday to possibly start the ball rolling on getting a series of projects noticed, or at least drawing some attention to those projects so they can appear on the tip later on, so that we can begin long-term planning for those projects. Queen Creek has some concerns with regard to their circulation of traffic, Mesa does, and of course, we have been interested for some time in facilitating a connection between the 202 and 87. So all that will be discussed as a package and as a regional issue. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Good, thank you very much. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
A second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Thank you.